Was going to be flea market type use. So if it was, the whole building was going to be flea market, why do you need the barbed wire and the gate? So we were trying to make it friendly for the customer to park there. So if there's still a transmissions business there, then that's up to you if you guys want to remove it. It's not an issue.
Do I have an emotion?
Motion to remove.
Do we have a second? To remove the barbed wire vents from one of the requirements?
And the gate.
And the gate.
Yeah.
Lead the item number two and three.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion second to not require those. Would you call the roll? Please.
I don't understand.
Wallace?
Yes.
Phillips?
No.
Foster?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Chambers?
No.
Banks?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. All right, so we have amendment. Do we have any other questions from the commissioners? Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to speak for this or against this? Okay. No one? Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Banks?
Yes.
Velasco? Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Okay. You can pass, get with Mr. Reeves and he'll tell you what to do next.
Thank you, sir.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank all of you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right, special use number 2019-9 to allow an audible repair business in an R3 zone located at 1705 Moss Street. Is the applicant here?
Yeah.
Would you come to the front, please? Let us have your, y'all's name and your address.
Margaret Warner.
I'm Aaron Hen. Address is 521 Melanie Lane, North of Arkansas.
Thank you. Tell me what you want to do, or tell us.
We are trying to get the property at 1705 Moss Street Zone. It is currently an R3. I think he's trying to get it rezoned to a C3. We only had a few things that needed to be worked on, but he's just trying to set up an audible repair business.
Okay.
Currently located, was not located.
Yeah. At the moment, we're, well, we was located at 2655 Pike Avenue, in the Pike Plaza Shopping Center. We've been there almost 10 years. Of course, we outgrew it, so once I seen the facility, I actually looked at it years ago and just so happened to come about for rent. The owner actually was using it as a storage facility outside, adjacent to the storage facility that he owns next door. So once I seen it, they actually, the owner ended up buying another location, another building somewhere else, so it came available. So once I seen it, of course, I called and tried to get a lease on it. So that's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spencer or Mr. Reeves? Are we trying to rezone it or just do a special use?
Request is for a special use to allow auto repair in R3 zone.
Okay. So we're not really trying to change the zone, is that our? Oh, no, that's okay. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on it. Okay. All right, commissioners, any comments? Mr. Chambers?
Problem with many auto repair, so look at the picture right behind you, is they don't look really tidy. And I'm not going to put a condition on it to maintain a tidy workspace. Please do, the rest will be later good. If it's successful, what you're doing, you probably do. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any that'd like to speak for it or against it?
Yes.
Yes, sir. If you would, come to the microphone. If you would state your name and your address, sir, please.
David Whitson, 1701 Parker. This is a R3 zone. My home is like a block from this. A junkyard defined is a public nuisance. That is criminal offense. You're talking criminal elements here that are the same, like in a junkyard. You've got tow trucks going all day long and contamination. You've got, just the nature of the business is aggressive. You know, so R3 zone is to protect the homeowner and their family from public nuisances and commercial business. This is not a commercial business district. I think this man made an excellent comment on they don't, you know, they become like a junkyard. He's already got, boy, about eight or nine cars on the premises now, as if he's already been approved. Now, you know, that's only a block from my home. This is something that, you know, with the contamination and cars leak fluids and, yeah, it's just a public nuisance.
Okay.
That's, um...
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments from the audience? The only comment I've got is what it looks like right now. And I wouldn't want it by my home either, just kind of like we have that in Levy, Arkansas right now. And so I'd be concerned about the way it looks now. And has he been cited by code already or just informed?
No, at the moment, in the process of the manager, the property manager told us that it was zoned properly.
Okay.
Another friend of mine told me, he was in the process of moving his location, which is a used car salesman. And when he came down and said, okay, he had, he needed rezoned for his, the building he was going to get, I decided, of course, let me go down and find out. So I got with Tim and everyone else to try to find out exactly what I need to do, so of course...
So you were proactive on that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So with the cars right now, is that we was already in the process of moving and our lease had terminated and right now it's just stored. So if we do not get approved, of course, it'll stay a storage until we actually find something else. But hopefully, I did check, I did see the gentleman drive by and I actually asked him. I came out, I seen him go by a couple of times, of course, I'm kind of leery about people, especially when it comes down to my customer cars or even my person cars, because a couple of them is my personal. So I went out and tried to ask him, you know, was there anything I can help you with? You know, he just riding by, I was like, hey, you know, but he didn't say anything, so I kind of looked at that. But anything when it comes down to chemicals, of course, we do have accounted with safety clean, anything with oil, some oil drippings we can't stop, some cars got, of course, we do use oil dry, anything else chemical wise that we can, that we can use to kind of get the oil up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spencer, Mr. Reeves, so it's allowed for storage right now?
Is there a business license at all involved at the moment?
At, for what, the, my business?
Yes.
Yes, we have, our business license actually at 2655 Pike Avenue.
Right, so the answer, no, it would not be allowed. But he could move those cars into the building and be fine.
If the cars were in the building, but if he had a business license, is that allowed? But the cars have to be?
If, if the business license is for repair, the cars would be allowed, if he's repairing them.
But he may comment if he's not approved that he would leave the vehicles there for storage. Is he allowed to, if he got a business?
No, not allowed to store them there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can we fire that back?
Yes, ma'am.
He wasn't meaning to leave them there for storage. He committed leaving them there, so we find out.
Oh, no, I knew what he meant. I just didn't, I just didn't want him to get a ticket.
Yeah, definitely don't want him to get a ticket. Anything for the repair is definitely inside, it's just bigger facility, so that's the reason why we kind of went to that.
Okay. All right, any other comments from the audience or the commissioners? Yes?
Under, under the staff recommendations, the staffers says a supportive buffer between the zoning ordinance, between commercial and residential, which we typically do, but I don't see that in the conditions to be considered. Do we need to add that? All I see is we're going to repair the existing chain link fence in the rear of the yard. Do we not want a wood fence separating this and the, and the rest of the residential area? I mean, there's commercial use and residential use next door.
This was discussed at design review. Design review committee talked about it with the applicant and made the recommendations you see in the conditions.
Not, not to do that?
Correct.
Can I get, find a little bit of water?
Yeah, I kind of remember now. Thank you. I slipped since then.
Okay. Any other comments? Would you please call the roll? Yes, sir, you may.
When you look at the area right there, you're looking at, there's not a whole lot of homeowners right in there. There's more tenants and that's, you know, with more homeowners would speak against this, you know what I'm saying? Because there's just a lot of tenants in this area. And I'm a homeowner, so it's too close to my home.
Okay, thank you. Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Wallace?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Chambers?
No.
Banks?
Yes.
Chairman White?
No. If you have five votes, it's affirmative, it did pass, so it will go to the city council. So if you'll get with Mr. Reeves or Ms. Spencer, they'll tell you what to do. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck. All right. We're at rezone 2019-5 to rezone property located southeast of the intersection of Kellogg Acres and Oakdale Road from a C3 to a PUD to allow for an event center. Would the applicant come? Yes, thank you.
Todd Adams, 8932 Stillwater Road in Sherwood.
Okay. And you're, sir?
I'm Jason Mountnik with Half Plus Marler.
With who?
Half Plus Marler.
Okay, thank you.
Engineer, so he's our...
Yeah, I got, he said Marler.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, for, this is the, sir, this is the item that you're here on?
Right.
Okay. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, first of all, the design review committee had some recommendations, we accepted all of those? You reviewed them?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have any comments from the commissioners? Tell us what you want to do.
So the venue at Oakdale is basically an event center predominantly focusing on attracting wedding events. As you can see by the design, we've got a chapel and then a reception area in it. So we're looking at a large investment of just a luxurious, nice place in a country setting. We strategically chose North Little Rock based on the lack of anything like it in, in that close proximity, but we also pushed it further out to the edge so that it would be a less populated area and we could maintain kind of a country setting, if you will, for the events. So we had some strategic thought processes there. It sits on 8.2 acres. There's only one North Little Rock resident that adjoins that acre, that adjoins this property. The rest of the property is undeveloped. And basically, we look to improve that area, try to bring wedding venues into that location. Another kind of strategy we've had with this is we may do some business training there as well. So during the week, we anticipate certain businesses that do professional development, housing, some of their training there as well. But the primary focus would be wedding events and things of those nature.
And normally, if it's a large wedding, how many people would that?
We're focusing around 300. That's the number that we have. Talking to John Flaster, I think the size of the building is designed for 500 plus based on the square footage and using the seated, or the seating arrangement that we would have. So it could go higher, but 300 was been, has been our...
And do we have enough parking for that?
We do.
Okay.
There's over eight acres there, so we have an excess.
All right. Ms. Chambers?
Sean, why is this a PUD and not a straight up commercial rezon?
An event center is a conditional use or special use. So it's, it's got, so we did it as a PUD to allow, so it's a set...
More control.
More control for the neighbors and everything, yes. Yeah, so it's a one, one use. Right now, the whole neighborhood is zoned commercial there. If you remember, 10 years ago, there were, there was a proposal for a mall there. And so right now, that whole area, there's acres, probably what, 20 acres, Jason?
Yeah.
At least 20 acres there is zoned commercial for a mall. So this is the first owner to come in to decide to do something else, so we're trying to recognize and get rid of the commercial and, or get rid of the C3, C4?
C3.
C3 zoning. And so this would be a lesser use, a PUD would be a lesser use than a mall there.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have anyone that would like to speak in favor? Do we have anyone to speak that opposes it?
Again, my name is Wayne Riffle. I live at 1205 Kellogg. On the map up there, in most north part of that, you can see Mine Road there to right back of my property. And, uh, my property is from Kellogg to Mine Road. So this is around the corner from me, just a little bit. And, uh, you know, I really can't believe that there's a, put a wedding chapel out there. I mean, we got the Old Mill, we've got a number of churches, and this is not a scenic place to put a wedding chapel. I, I'm not sure, I just don't understand why you would choose that for a wedding chapel. Also understand that we can have outdoor concerts there, you know, and that could be quite noisy. Most of the residents out there are like me, getting old. You know, our bedtime is closer to 10 o'clock rather than midnight every night. And so I would like, I don't see Mr. Medlock here, but I would like to understand that he's really going to invest money in putting a wedding chapel there that makes sense. I'm more concerned that, uh, we're figuring out some way to try to sell the property, you know? I'm not sure that the wedding chapel makes sense. But anyway, there's still a for sale sign on the property, and so if we're going to do something else, looks like for sale sign would come down, but maybe that will do sometime. And the outside concerts, that's an issue with me. Well, some of the, some of the land, I guess, is going to be still commercial. We have some issues about the noise. Is Mr. Medlock going to own this property and the commercial property, or is he going to sell it all off? You know, I don't know that I'm opposed to this, but I just don't know why. And how are we going to address traffic? Do I call North Little Rock when the noise level is too high, or is that a Sherwood issue since I live in Sherwood? You know, right there together. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me unless we're trying to figure out some way to sell the property that's not really disclosed here. Is this the final plan that we're working on here? We've carved off a few acres there for this. You know, I just don't understand why we would do this in that location. I mean, weddings, we go to the Old Mill. Thank you for that. I mean, it's a beautiful sight. And so anyway, I don't know who I call for the noise level when we have concerts. I don't know how we address parking there. I have a circle drive, so I can see a bunch of cars coming up and circling around my driveway to get back down there and stuff like that. Sounds like it's a real issue for me. Like, no one else out there has a circle driveway, that's only real convenient for turning around. So, uh, your notes here that Mr. Spencer shared with me, said there could be some negative effect on the surrounding single homes. I don't know what you're really referring to there, but there's certainly going to be some negative impact on that. Once this is built, it's there. Unlike the young man trying to do the animal boarding, you can take his license away, but this is only a permanent structure there that's going to be there. So anyway, it's maybe the best use of the property.
Thank you, sir. Oh, yes, ma'am.
My name is Bobby Riffle, and I also live at 1205 Kellogg Road. Well, you mentioned it was 10 years ago when they changed it from residential to C3. I didn't realize it was that long ago, but the people then said they were going to build them all. There was never any effort to build them all, you know, they just got to rezon them. Now, I've seen on the Facebook thing, on the internet, the pictures of this building look beautiful. In concept, a wedding chapel, and a meeting place in that beautiful building is a lot better than a lot of things that could be there, you know? My concern is, are they, are they committing to this here? Because there really is still a for sale sign there, just like there was 10 years ago or whenever it was. And these other people said they were going to do them all, and they didn't, and they just got rezoning. So I don't want that to happen again, where it gets rezoned and then they say, well, we changed our mind, now we're going to do this or that. You know, this within the PUD allowable things, to say, well, no, we're just going to have outdoor concerts, you know? Because I talked to Tim a few days ago, and he said, I asked about that, could they do that? And he said, yes, with this PUD, they could. And like my husband said, it's mostly older people that have lived out there for many years. It's been totally residential and virtually still is, except for this piece of property that y'all rezoned 10 years ago, and now it's up in question again. And even Mr. Medlock said that the lots on the backside on Mine Road is going to be residential, didn't he? You know, Wayne talked to him, because we inquired about maybe buying some property next to us there. So before y'all make a decision, and before we can really feel yes or no on this, we'd like to know exactly, I mean, specifically, is this building, is Sean going to be built? When's it going to be built? When's it going to be started? Or are you just going to put it, this property, or keep this property up for sale and say, now it has a PUD classification?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm going to ask him.
Well, I could answer part of it for you.
Why don't you answer it first?
So right now, it's Zone C3, which has hundreds of abilities for, for businesses to happen there. By going to PUD, it's only going to be allowed one use for what you're seeing in the drawings and what's, what's in there. So it's...
And you're just going to outdoor concerts? That's a bad thing. And you know it's going to be at this next PUD.
But what has to be built on this is this, right?
The, what, the, when it comes back up, but that drawing with that parking and that type of building is what's going to be required. So that's part of the PUD.
So the question that the young lady also asked is, when are you going to start?
You know, it depends on how quick this process goes, there's other things to be approved, but...
Let's say you get approved tomorrow morning.
We'd like to start next month.
So we got that answer.
Are you going to have outdoor bands and concerts?
Well, let me, let me do that. So are we, how many, are we going to have a lot of concerts? Are they going to be every week? Are they going to be every month? Or you don't know?
We plan to have weddings every weekend.
No, those are weddings, and talk about a concert, you know, Led Zeppelin concert or something.
Yeah.
So are you going to have a lot of those? Not weddings, concerts.
I don't know that we plan to have any concerts.
Okay, and that's what I wanted you to tell her that.
Right, right. Our intent is just to have weddings there, that's, that's really it.
And your answer there is, I don't know? No, we're not going to have concerts.
That's not our intent to have any concerts here, no. I don't know why you'd have a concert there to begin with, but that's not our intent.
So this is strictly for a wedding chapel?
This is strictly for wedding, as we said at the beginning of this.
Okay. All right, do we have any other comments? Okay.
I would like one of them, my favorite one. That's the two lane road there, at the bottom of that hill. And that's where I stand all, I mean, sometimes they have closed the hill. A lot of times, they have to close the hill. 300 people coming out on that two lane road that I, has that been addressed in the plans here?
Uh, the city, the, the traffic engineer will address those. That, you know, that's, that's...
Jason can...
Jason?
That actually is being taken before the city council or the planning commissioner at Sherwood, because that's in Sherwood's jurisdiction.
Okay.
So that, that's July 9th being put before...
Let her know.
Sherwood, that's your birthday?
Yes, it's in Sherwood.
July the 9th?
The property is, you know...
It's free.
It's free.
Okay. All right, so any other comments? Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Banks?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. It did pass, get with Mr. Reeves and Mr. Spencer, and they'll tell you what to do. And, and I'm just glad it's not commercial anymore, is what I think, is my opinion. All right. Next one. Rezone 2019-6 to rezone property located at 4140 JFK Boulevard from an R1 to a C2 to allow a credit union. Would the applicant come to the front?
Mr. Chairman, can I address you for a moment?
Yes, sir.
This is, just for full disclosure, this is Linda Jeffrey, she is my cousin.
Okay.
Okay, I don't think you'll have any legal issues that you have any questions, but I'm going to stay out of this, okay?
No, because we're going to vote against it now. No kidding. Yes, ma'am, would you tell us what you'd like to do?
Yes, I'm Linda Jeffrey, and I'm the president of True Service Community Federal Credit Union. We are requesting to rezon this to C2 from R1. It is a, the former US bank branch, and we intend to operate a credit union, which is similar use in there, would be a financial institution. We are not proposing any changes to the footprint of the property. We will freshen it up on the outside and do renovations internally.
Any comments from the commissioners?
Yes, would you consider combining with the current landscape ordinance?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Will you continue to let the people park here, Christian Park there?
Of course.
Okay, just want to make sure my mother goes there. So, any other comments? Any fors or againsts in the audience? All right, with that, would you call the roll?
Wallace?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Deets?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. It did pass.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'm excited about that. All right, we're in public comment. Uh, Ms. Chambers?
I'm concerned about these, uh, transport units showing up like a lot of war dollars in the city and, I don't know, and howling and possibly slow or controlling or anything like this, but it's just a concern of mine. Before you know it, they're going to be everywhere, and there's definitely nothing to fall back on because we've already set a precedent of allowing them everywhere, you know?
Well, we're allowing them by a special use. So we're allowing them by a special use. So we're, I mean, there being, the two that were coming before you, or this one was code enforcement, so I mean, it was, it was caught being there, so it's, it's, I mean, we're not permitting them, they're, they're going in illegally and we're catching them doing it.
Okay, so, if I see any, I can always give you, give planning or code enforcement a call?
Yep, we'll find out if they've got a permit. So, it's a, be a thirty, we'll issue a thirty day permit and it's, it's a free permit.
And when we, when we talk about containers, the one they drop off that people furniture, it's sixty day limit?
There's, I get with you, but if there's a building permit associated with it, there, it's allowed as long as the permit's active. So, if they're putting their furniture in to remodel the kitchen or something.
Okay.
It's, that's, that's a different story than someone putting it to store their car in it or, you know, for some other use.
And I would like our public officials, thanks for coming today. And I have one other question on the apartments again, that we're building that overlook the interstate. Is there any landscaping requirement that's required to them that's in the front of it between them and the buildings here, interstate's here? Because that whole deal with all the rain we've had, it's just washing away, washing away. And I'm getting calls from people in Lakewood, which, you know, I can't do anything about it. But one of the question is, are they going to do, are they required to do any landscaping?
There's, there's some street trees that are repla, I'll, I'll send you the reduced PDF of it so you can email it to somebody.
I would like to...
But, yeah, there, there is, it meets the city requirements and everything.
And then the second thing, there's a rumor out there that we're getting ready to eliminate some of the wetlands again and trade them off and put something there, which no one's told me what they're thinking about putting on, I guess that's the highway there, that's a shopping center or something and fill in those wetlands. I think the strong thing that needs to go to, whether it's the city engineer or to the city or to the contractor is, is if we look at all the floods that we have lately, we need those floodlands.
On the other side of the interstate?
We need them all, yeah.
I mean, that's where you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, we haven't heard anything, but I mean, it doesn't mean...
It's, it's, it's on the Corps of Engineers webpage that, and the city engineer does, does know about it because he called me on it and wanted to show me where it is, but...
Isn't it, isn't it expansion of their current footprint?
It's, it's expansion of their current footprint.
All the way to North Hill?
That's my understanding. And right now, it's full of water. I mean, you go by there right now, it's backed up big time and, you know, and even behind the, I still call it Lakewood Gardens. That, you know, it, that's, it's backing up in there, so...
Well, I'd have to have them give the elected officials and city engineers if there, if there's people opposed to it.
Yeah, if you could check into that.
Yeah, because it, it does, that doesn't come through our office at all.
Yeah.
So, you, you know, you knew more about it than I did.
The board of directors has a comment section on it.
Well, that's where it is and they comment it. So, but the thing about it, it still has to be approved by the city for that to happen, doesn't it?
I'm not, not sure on the process there. I'll, I'll find out for you.
I'd like that.
Okay.
All right.
I'm going to motion to the chairman, please.
We're not going to accept that. All in favor?
And, and the doggy, the doggy...